Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order. Welcome to the July ninth Manchester Town Council meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual liberty and justice.
Yes, thank you. All right. Good evening. We'll start with approving some of the minutes and get through that, and we'll move on to everyone's reports. I'd like to start with the approval of the June eleventh two thousand twenty-four minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the June eleventh twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Also, the receipt of the May two thousand twenty-four Treasurers Report.
I'll make a motion. We received the May two thousand twenty-four Treasurers Report.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'll pass as well. And one more. June two thousand twenty-four check register.
I'll make a motion. We receive the June twenty twenty-four check register.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes as well. All right, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report. Glad to see everybody's here. We have some nice cool air conditioning, so I guess everybody's gonna enjoy that today. Couple things. The Carol, the carnival, great success for everybody who came out. I hope you enjoyed it. I think it was very nice, very well attended. I'll let the Chief talk more about that, how everything went. You were there a little bit more than I was, so. National Night Out here will be on Tuesday, August sixth, from five to seven at the Manchester Carnival Grounds at the Activities Building. It's a lot of fun. If you have kids or grandkids, you want to bring them out. Pretty much everything's free, and they can enjoy some hot dogs and drinks and, you know, some giveaways, so it's, it's a lot of fun. There'll be some other surprises here, too, I believe, if it all works out, so it'll be fun to come to. Again, it's from five to seven. The time changed a little bit this year due to the Hampstead Carnival and things like that. We're trying to make it all work out. The yard waste pickup on Wednesdays through December eighteenth consists of grass clippings, leaves, and small branches not in excess of three feet in length and four inches in diameter. Branches must be bundled in armful loads. Yard waste should not be mixed with mulch, dirt, or any other residential refuse, including pet waste. Residents should place the yard waste curbside on Tuesday evening for Wednesday's pickup. All yard waste must be placed in large craft paper bags or in a container that is marked yard waste, just to help the haulers distinguish between the yard waste, the trash, and hopefully they don't miss and pick up the wrong thing. Please don't use plastic bags because they will not pick them up unless they're in paper bags. Also, please help with the wind-blown litter. Recycling bins, trash cans, and things like that seem to be spilling over when there's wind at night. Lately, we haven't had anything, so it's been okay, but if you know it's gonna storm or it's gonna be windy, try to get up a little early and put them out versus the neighbors trying to chase your things down the street in the morning. That would be great. The grass clippings and leaves, please don't blow or rake the clippings and leaves in the street or down the storm drain. It causes flooding and clogs the drains. Just sweep it or pick it up or whatever is, if you could. We try to only let rain go down the storm drain, so. The Oak Notes newsletter is gonna be available. If you guys want to pick some up on the way out, we have them, or you can also go on our website, and you can print it there or go read it. It's www.manchasterrmd.gov, or you can get one at the Town Hall. Water bills were mailed out on June twenty-ninth. They're due on the thirtieth, not the thirty-first, just so everybody knows, and everybody knows there was a rate increase, but it doesn't start till October, so we don't have to deal with that for this term. And Antietam broadband, a reminder to the residents, underground crews will be working in the area, maybe digging in utility easements on your property. They will make every effort to minimize the disruptions, restore the utility right away to reconstruct, for pre-construction conditions. If you have issues, there's a phone number. You could always call here, and we can give it to you, because I know you're not gonna remember it now when I tell it to you, but you can always call here, and we have a number you call direct if you have any problems, because we obviously do not want that. But yeah, the Oak Notes is out. I know a lot of people asked about that, so we'll have it. I believe they're out there on your way out. You can pick one up, or again, you can go online and look, give you some updates on what's going on. I think that's all I have right now until I remember it in about ten minutes, but for now, that's it. Rodney, you have a public works report? Please.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Please see the water and wastewater data report for June two thousand twenty-four. We're seeing numbers consistent with this time of year with the outside activities for summertime. Lead and copper rule risen. Nothing new to, to report on that. We had a difficult water main repair at twenty-nine sixty-five Manchester Road Sunday night into, up till three-thirty in the morning, Monday morning. I just want to thank Zeb and Spencer for all their help keeping our guys safe. York, York Street Water Tower Rehab, they're starting up again, back to full work in progress, starting July fifteenth, the week of July fifteenth, and the completion date is moved to September. It will be done by September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and it's, our contractor is K and K Painting. PFAS mitigation project, the PER, the PER Preliminary Engineer Report has been received and sent to M D for approval. Our staff had, had a contractor come in and install a float valve replacement at the spray irrigation facility. This regulates the flow to, it makes an even flow to the contact, contact chamber. It's a hundred percent completed, and the contractor was Mid-Atlantic Utilities. We have a sewer main, sewer main cured and placed piping project coming up next week, and if you may see those folks at Christmas Tree Lane, York Street, and Water Street. It's, the contractor is Humphreys and, and Son, and this is to address I and I issues at the wastewater, ultimately at the wastewater treatment plant. This year's storm, this fiscal year's storm drain repairs is out to bid. It was advertised last week. I have a pre-bid meeting July sixteenth, and the bids are due August sixth. We have twenty we're looking at to repair this time around. The Manchester Street paving project for this fiscal year, I had a pre-bid meeting today. The bids are due the eighth of, of, of August. And folks may see weight markings at, in certain areas, Brightside, Washington Way, Southwestern, Hilltop, Victory Street, Bachman Road, to name a few. They're on the list. Also, the parking lot at the Town Hall, and there's a patch behind the, the post office that's getting fixed. New Town Hall, yes. The, the pervious concrete's gone bad, so we're getting pervious asphalt, asphalt put in. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me back.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay.
All right. Chief, please report.
First and foremost, the carnival this year was incredible. We had great weather, got a little hot in the end. We only had juvenile problems, and they were all. Extremely minor in nature. It was a good crowd out there. The firework display, Councilman Miller, that was, that was probably the best I've seen in several years.
I've heard a lot of.
Went on for a long time, a lot of kudos. I mean, from the display to the crowd, it was a great night, so that was a good night, and, you know, I think there's some confusion out there, and Ms. Miller, feel free to chime in. The, the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department, it still exists. They still need volunteers. We need volunteers more now than ever. There is a paid fire department for the county, but to be quite frank, they're short-staffed, and without the volunteers, we can't continue to keep the community safe the way we do.
And as, as of right now, it's just EMS, as primarily in Manchester. They do have a driver firefighter.
Right.
On staff, but majority of the fire calls themselves are run by volunteers.
Volunteers, and I can tell you, we, we hear the medic calls all day long. It's getting to the point where our teams have to dip down to Baltimore County, and there's times when we don't have any medics up there. So that influx of volunteers, I can't stress it enough, it's very important. So, we, and, and, you know, when you get to the carnival, I mean, that's part of our community. That's part of small-town life, and the last thing we want to do is see that go away. But without the volunteers, we're not gonna be able to make it happen, and I saw the fire department struggle this year with the volunteers. That's why I'm bringing this up. I mean, it's just, it's part of the fabric of the community, and it's what makes Manchester and its small-town life so good, because collectively, between them and us and you and everybody else in the community, that's how we maintain our great quality of life. So just understand the importance of those volunteers, and if you can volunteer, or nobody, somebody that wants to become a medic or firefighter, please do it. Get involved, because it's definitely a, a well-worth investment.
And you don't have to join the department if you want to volunteer. You have some hours, and you see a function, they're always looking for people to jump right in, and in fact, a lot of the volunteers at carnival are not members.
Right.
They're just members of the community, not members of the department.
Right.
Or they can be admin. They don't have to, you know, they don't have to ride a piece of equipment. People are, a lot of people are afraid of that, but you can show up and help with anything.
Help out.
Anything, so.
Yep. So anyway, it was a great night. It was a great week, and, and like I said, we had very little problems, and they were juvenile-related, and so that was a good thing. So, for the month of June and actually into the first part of July, we did have an uptick in calls and service and, and requests. We were, we were between two ninety-six and three hundred. We only had twelve incidents outside of town, so the general area was pretty busy. Our biggest problem is juveniles. We're having a problem with the juveniles in the area, and we're trying to stay on top of that because we want to keep the crime down. Again, we had zero Part One crime, so that's a big win. I mean, we're a small town. As long as we can maintain those small-town problems, I'm, I'm, I'm good. That, that's good. It's what we all, it's what we all need. We did charge five persons criminally. Three were traffic-related, and two were isolated assault cases, and one was juvenile-related there. Traffic enforcement yielded a hundred and forty-two warnings and citation. It was low due to our focus on other crime issues, the juveniles, and the special event coverage. So we'll start to pick up that enforcement again in this upcoming month. More good news, the overdoses are down. We're still maintaining a forty-seven percent decrease in the total number of overdoses, and the fatalities are down fifty-two percent. So when you look at, when you hear the talk of the uptick in overdoses in the Baltimore, Montgomery County areas, and us being down, that's a huge plus. I hope we keep heading in that right direction. Manchester had our first overdose for the year. Hampstead had five, Shakespeare had one, Tony Town had seven, Mount Airy had one, Westminster's thirty-two, New Windsor's one, and Union Bridge is one. All the other numbers account for outside the municipalities. That's about it.
Thank you. Alex, it's gonna be your turn now. If you're gonna keep your toes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. My report is brief. As we know, Antietam continues to work within the town limits. Staff has found small humps that have been occurring in roadways in their current construction, in Antietam's current construction area. Director Koontz and his staff are well aware of these, and we communicate this every other week when we have a meeting with Antietam. Obviously, we know that we have rocky soil here in Manchester, so as they bore horizontally across the street, that's what's causing the upheaval in the road. So, we are aware of it. We're keeping track of the locations, and they've been very easy to deal with. Antietam's contractors and repairing knows. Also, the hut here at the off, Town Office Building down on the other side by the Salt Barn has been completed and installed, so that portion of it is done. As Director Koontz said, we received our P E R for PFAS and sent it to M D E. We did get the results back of our application for funding. We are number six in the state. We did very well. Right now, they fully funded what the P E R has said. However, it's in a thirty-day comment period, so on July twenty-seventh will be the end of that thirty-day comment period, and then we'll know what is grant and what is state revolving loan, but that looks pretty good. We did offer a job, and the gentleman accepted the position for wastewater operator one. He is slated to start July twenty-second. We're going through all the pre-employment requirements at this time. Finally, congratulations to Director Koontz. He passed his wastewater operator five A exam, which puts us right where we need to be for the E N R upgrade, so we're well on our way for that.
How about congratulations to Alex Paracconi for passing his?
We're not supposed to boast about yourself, but yes, I passed the one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I forgot to say that earlier.
And finally, there's no P and Z meeting this month, and there's no further report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have some questions or comments from the community. I think Matthew Chauvelin, did I say that right? Would you mind coming up here and just stating your name and where your, your address and? Please.
Yes, my name is Matthew Chauvelin, new to the community. I live on four twenty-four Hanover Pike, literally right down thirty. I'm considered Melrose, but I, my address is Manchester. Couple things. Is there anything being done for veterans in this community, such as, you know, some of us have, like, home repairs, and we're trying to, you know, get those funds to be able to, you know, fix our houses and stuff like that, because my house is, you know, pretty old. It's one of the oldest ones. It's a hundred and twenty-four years old. It's been around here, you know, for as long as most members have been here. My property overlooks the seller's farms, so they're the original builders of my house. So, that's the first question. Is there anything, or any kind of committees being held for veterans in this community? Second one is, is there anything being done for, like, you know, the elementary school? My daughter goes to F Valley, and now I've mentioned to the principal and the vice principal about there's a group of veterans who we are willing to, you know, be like, you know, security for that school, you know, to make sure the kids stay safe. And, you know, some of us don't work, like myself, but I'm, I've been trying to, you know, get us out there to be able to make this community a lot safer. And that's one, one way we can do that is by volunteering our, our hours, you know, during the day to, you know, come search school, make sure, you know, nobody's trying to break in or, you know, nobody's acting erratic. So, is there anything extra being done for the schools around here?
Chief, I'll, I'll.
I think I can.
Okay.
Be able to answer the first one, too.
Okay.
So there, the American Legion in Westminster, the core people down there, they're very big on getting veteran assistance. Their names are escaping me right now, but there, there's two or three gentlemen down there that they're, they're pretty much on top of it. They can definitely point you in the right direction. So if you go to that Westminster Legion, I'm sure they'll be able to help you out there, because I, I do know that there's a couple organizations within Carroll County that are very veteran-oriented, so that, that could help you there.
Yeah, because I was directed to come over here to talk with yourself or somebody, you know, part of the police department to, you know, get that going, because apparently it was actually stopped at one point in time, but, you know, we're trying to get it, you know, going back.
Are you talking security or?
Yes, security.
So, I've been here eleven years, and we have never had veteran security at any school. The Board, Board of Education, they control the security. There's a gentleman by the name of Curtis Pierce. He's actually in charge of it, and anything that deals with the school and the school's security goes through him. And Martin, I, I don't ever remember veterans being involved of some type of security base for the schools. But the, the part I was talking about for Westminster was the answer to your first question.
Yeah, because I'm part of a, you know, I'm an ambassador for the Veterans Independence Project over in Westminster, and, you know, we, we haven't talked about the security, but, you know, we are big on helping schools.
Yeah.
Around the state of Maryland.
That would all have to be directed to those gentlemen, the Board of Education. Curtis Pierce is the one who's actually running that.
Yeah, they don't unfortunately let us do anything with the school.
We, we have a school resource officer program that's ran out of the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. Our team teams up with them, but they, they actually have a full, fully dedicated program that, that is involved with the schools.
And I heard you mention about, you know, is there any programs for kids who are juveniles who are creating these, you know, creating havoc around here? Is there anything to try to help them keep it?
No, not really, no.
Has anybody thought about, you know, creating a program for them?
Not, not, not to my knowledge in Carroll County. I can tell you even Baltimore, that's kind of faded out. It's a big topic now. I mean, the whole juvenile justice program right now is broken, and there's, there's a lot of people involved, to include the governor, who is trying to fix it, but it's deep, and it's, the entire system's broken. So it's gonna take a lot of people to get that back on track.
And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, historically, the issues that we've had involving minors, majority of them are not minors that reside in our town.
Most, most times, they were out of town, but now we're starting to have problems with minors.
But historically, they're.
Outsiders.
Outsiders that are coming in and causing.
We're, we're fortunate up here. Most of the kids that are living in the town, normally through conversation, we can, we can abate the issues. Thank God they're not serious.
That's true, because, you know, I think, you know, we should be doing some for those, you know, youngsters, and, you know.
That's not saying.
There's, there should be like a mentorship program for, you know, these kids, and I'll see it, you know, I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah.
Since I moved to the state of Maryland, and, you know, there's a lot of veterans who can mentor these kids.
Not a, not a bad idea by all means. I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea. I just.
Yeah.
I don't know how we would go about or put them in touch with to try to get something going.
The whole veteran security thing and that, right, that, I can tell you, I don't know who told you that. I'm not aware of that ever being up here.
It's just something that we've talked about at the school.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they direct me to Pierce, but trying to get a hold of them, we have no clue how to.
I mean, I would think this, like, like you said, Vince, the State's Attorney's Office would be able to point them in the right direction with being some kind of situation for juveniles.
My email is on, on our website. Email me, and let me do some research for you.
All right, and the last thing is, I know if, because my house is very old, and we have a well system, I've actually called to the county. They have no diagrams of, you know, where the pipes are under, underneath the ground, in case, you know, a plumber needs to do work, you know, under the house, sure, but on the property itself, there's no diagrams whatsoever. So, you know, is there anything gonna be done?
I'll direct that to the town manager.
Is he, he's technically outside of town, right?
Well, so you have a well inside your home?
It's actually outside. I'm not.
It's outside?
Yes.
So, most likely, your well is encased, and it's probably anywhere from about fifty to a hundred and fifty feet deep. You should have some paperwork when you bought the home that the well should have been inspected, tested for gallons per minute, and that if you didn't, you may have to call a plumber and have all that done.
It did, and I actually did call a plumber, but the issue I had was there was a lot of water damage in my property, because whoever was there last, you know, messed up and didn't even tighten up the, the pipes, didn't do it the right way, and I ended up getting flooding, especially in my basement. So I, I had to call a friend of mine, and we had to redirect that, that, um, that pipe from the well to my house instead of looking for it in the ground.
And I'm not trying to push you away by any means. Don't think that, but with you being outside of town limits technically, we really don't have any access to any of that. That all has to go through Carroll County. We only can get it, we only have information on the people that are in town. Certainly, I mean, have you, did you call Carroll County?
Yeah.
They don't have anything?
They have nothing. I mean, they have no diagrams. I think, you know, it'd be a good idea to have the diagrams, you know, for anybody else who takes over my house.
Yeah.
You know, in the, in the far future, and knows, hey, this is where it was, and if there's a leak, you know, we can easily fix it.
Right.
Instead of just trying to track the old pipes.
We're going for the hot fons?
No, not for, unless you have the internal.
No, the county permits office wouldn't have that. The Health Department, you can probably find out data on your well. They, they gotta have it.
They have no, I've called them.
The Health Department has no data on your well.
Zero.
Well, welcome to Carroll County.
Oh, it's terrible to say, but years ago, it wasn't, they just don't have some of the documentation they should have had from years ago. I've heard people say that, but you are correct. I've also had some people call the Health Department, and what, you called the Health Department, not just Carroll County? Did you call the Carroll County Health Department? They didn't have it either?
Nope.
The. But they don't control wells.
No, they.
Sorry, they don't control wells. It's all through the Health Department.
They actually directed me to the health. So there was no, like, yeah, you have to contact this person.
Yeah.
So.
In, in aged homes, you don't know where it could be a new, I mean, the age of your home, whatever that is, there's a whole span. My parents' home still had a well in the basement that was dug as part of the house versus an exterior well, which is more common nowadays, so. I'm sorry. That's just what happens with age. Things aren't always written down. In answer to your first question, have you contacted the Carroll County Veteran Services Program?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I mean, I've, I'm in contact with, you know, V I P, you know, I talked to Habitat for Humanity, and it's just, you know, some of those veterans, you know, we're trying to do what we can, but, you know, there's only a limit to what they can do, especially American Legion and V F W, and you literally have to qualify for almost everything, even as a veteran, so.
Good luck.
Sorry, I wish I had better answers for you, but if you email Chief Hess, he's gonna check into a few things for you, right?
Yes.
And I have, I wrote down the Chief of Security and the Coordinator of School Security. There are email addresses and phone numbers for Carroll County Public Schools that might help.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right. Steve Castro?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chief. I guess you guys have seen me before. I'm here again. Give a little background. I moved on to Millie Way back in nineteen eighty-seven. Back then, Millie Way was just part of a small development Whispering Valley. We were only connected to Holland Road. Over the years, they built crossroads overlooking Westminster Street, got connected to Bachman Road. They built Halle Hills and Halle Avenue, got connected to Millie Way, and now we have the Manchester bypass basically running right through the neighborhood. The speed in our neighborhood is just unchecked, unfortunately. It seems people don't care, because we're not seeing enforcement out there, and they're driving as fast as they want through the neighborhood. We have restrictions on Whispering Valley in the morning. All the entrances are do not enter between six-thirty A M or six A M till eight-thirty A M, and nobody's paying attention to those signs. They're coming right up Millie Way. We have a lot of traffic in the morning, and then also, in the evenings, I guess, when Route Thirty backs up at twenty-seven, they start coming down through Westminster Street and down our hill. I live on the hill, three, four, four, nine, Millie Way. On the hill that leads down to Friday Mill Road, the people come down the hill, they do forty miles an hour through a twenty mile an hour development. We've got little kids on the street. Their neighbor's cat got run over. It's bad. The morning, I, I just found out recently that we've had an officer sitting at, from time to time, at Rochelle and Millie Way in the morning. Why wasn't he ticketing these people coming up Millie Way? They're going right past a do not enter sign. Apparently, he was sitting at the stop sign. I don't know what he was doing. But by, according to my neighbors who saw him, he didn't pull over or ticket anybody, so my question is, what are we doing, and how come we say we're small town, we got small-town issues? I think one of the biggest small-town issue is the traffic in our neighborhoods. I mean, it's everywhere. I was really surprised. Last night, I came down Halle Avenue heading towards his house, and I actually saw a patrol car sitting at the pump station there on Halle Avenue, but it was eight o'clock at night. The main issue, I mean, I should say, they speed day and night, mostly at night, and if it's raining, it seems like it's worse, but the traffic is rush-hour traffic mainly that I think we need to start at least trying to enforce here, because in the morning, I see the same cars coming up my street. They get it at the bottom of the hill, they floor it. I can hear it. I mean, some of these trucks with the big exhaust sign. I mean, some of these trucks with the big exhausts on it rattle my windows as they go up the street.
So they live in your neighborhood?
Wide open, and they floor it all the way up the hill, and then the people coming down the hill, nobody puts on their brakes. They're zooming past my house. I know I've called you several times, I've, I've left messages for you, I've talked to patrol officers in the past, but I, I'm home all the time. I work from home, I walk my dog. You guys see me probably all the time walking my dog. Vince, you see me when you ride by on your motorcycle all the time, walking my little dog.
I do.
I see these people day in and day out. It's the same people, they got their phone in their face, they're not paying attention, they're going way over to Speedlin, but we got all those kids in Hallie Hills that are running around there, and I mean, somebody's gonna get run over, somebody's gonna get killed, and we're not doing anything about it, and that's why I'm here tonight.
I'm gonna let Chief speak on this, but we've been going, we've been dealing with this for a long time, and there, they do, they do monitor every neighborhood. I know they do, because I've actually done some checking, not that I have to, because they do their job, but I've talked to a lot of people, and first off, I will say, thank God, that's our biggest problem in small town, for starters, but we do wanna, you know, Chief will tell you, but, I mean, we've had issues in pretty much my neighborhood, we've had issues in that neighborhood, we've had issues in Hallie Hills.
All the towns.
Every single, you know.
Twenty mile an hour everywhere.
And, you know, if, the speed limits are the speed limits, and it's the same thing everywhere you go, it's not just here, it's everywhere, Carroll County, Baltimore County, and, you know, monitoring these people, we're all adults, and we should all be doing the right thing. But it does get frustrating, I agree. I deal with the same thing, like I said, in my neighborhood, I'll let Chief speak on their, you know, I, I, I will say, I kind of find it hard to believe that the police let everybody run the stop signs and don't stop them. I kind of think that would be a futile issue.
I saw that happen.
Yeah, that would be a futile issue. Why would you go park your car there and let everybody run the stop sign? I mean, that doesn't make sense, but, you know, unfortunately, when you're seeing the same people every day.
I'm not talking about the stop sign. There is a do not enter on Milli Way between six AM and eight-thirty AM, and he watched cars come right past me. He was sitting at the stop sign or the stop street at Rochelle, which is the top of Milli Way and Milli Way, the corner. So these cars are coming up Milli Way, going right past him, and he did not stop one car or ticket them.
And you saw him do that, or your neighbor?
My neighbor saw him, and my neighbor is somebody that worked for the town all his life, and I think you all know him.
Who your neighbor is?
Okay.
Well, I'll let Chief speak on that. I, I, that's interesting, but I'll let Chief speak on that, because I don't handle the police department unless, unless it gets past that.
So just to digress a bit, Steve, the first I heard about your complaint recently was through Councilperson Hal.
I've, I've read you've several messages, I know.
I, I'm gonna tell you point blank, and I'm gonna say it on record right here, you got the wrong number, because I don't have one message from you.
It's been a while since I've called. I, I stopped calling because I never got a call back.
I cannot remember the last time you called, because I return all my phone calls.
It was over a year ago, because I never got a call back.
It's gotta be more than that, but yes. So second, as you know, we're pretty much complaint driven. Every one of us will tell you up here, because a lot of us live in the area, well, we all live in the area.
Sure.
It, it's, it is a bypass problem, and it's a huge problem. Right now, it's probably dying down because the free flow of traffic.
Yeah, schools are out, and I should have been here during school, but unfortunately, my evenings sometimes, Tuesdays are not open for me, so this is my first chance I've had in like six months to come to a meeting. I wanted to come back in February, believe me, but I haven't had a chance to come.
So you did see him last night at eight o'clock, and you should have saw him yesterday, because after Councilperson Hal told me about the problem picking up again, they were sitting down there, and they were down there again today. And, because they are going to do the enforcement when they can do the enforcement.
Sure.
Back to your sign issue, whoever wrote that sign is back, back, way back when, the officer just can't stop them from going through that sign. They have to follow them through, there's gotta be a secondary violation, there's all kinds of issues with that.
I guess we should take it down and give up? I mean, seriously.
No, 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 but what I'm saying, there's a lot more that goes into it.
Yeah.
Putting that sign there and the way, the fashion they did it without the, the, the huge display, because it can be easily missed, creates a lot of issues for us on the judicial side of it. So there's a lot more that goes into it.
The reason the sign went up, like I said, I've lived there thirty-seven years.
Right.
We all had issues, and we all came to the town council back when they, they hooked those roads together and said, this is a mistake. You can't hook these roads together, because as soon as Route Thirty backs up, the cars are gonna come through, and they're gonna use Whispering Valley as a bypass. So they said, we'll take care of it for you. We'll put up signs, and we'll enforce that people won't be driving through your neighborhood in the morning, and now you're gonna tell me that those signs don't mean a darn thing?
I'm gonna tell you, it came to a time where the prior police chiefs got in trouble because they had signs going up all over the neighborhood, and they were writing tickets, and the town was getting the money, which is illegal. So all that signage was great, but they made promises to you that you can't keep.
Great.
And we try our best to prevent it.
We, we let them build these developments and all these roads and stuff, we all agreed to it, and then we were sold a bill of goods, is what you're telling me. What's that? I mean, put a car there in the morning, at least give it to turret at the, the circle to pay the people.
So listen, the biggest problem, you could have ten neighborhoods, the biggest problem is Route Thirty, and as you said, when the school system starts, it becomes backed up.
Sure.
And our neighborhoods are the unofficial bypass. Long lane's an unofficial bypass, maiden lanes a.
I get it.
I could go one and one, Burt Fowler, all the way down, it just becomes one huge problem.
I know, you got problems up the hill, you got problems here in town, but I'm saying, we've got a sign there. If some, if you try to undo some enforcement at least, maybe put a car at the circle in the morning or something, I don't know.
Part of that reason is, myself and the town manager and the mayor, we talked about a couple of codes. We're trying to get them to the point where they're a little bit more enforceable, and we are sitting down, I think our first meeting's, when is it?
July twenty-third.
July twenty-third, and there's a couple of codes that we have to expedite, because we wanna do more. We wanna get a little bit more of a hold.
We'll sit out there around, between six-thirty and seven, because there's about ten cars that come by between six-thirty and seven in the morning, and I swear, every single one of them does forty miles an hour up Milli Way. I can hear them floor it when they get to the bottom of the hill, and they don't shut off till they get to the stop sign.
I got you. And, and listen, we are not, don't get me wrong, because I get frustrated, too. I was just in front of Councilperson.
I mean, this affects my property value, my, my quality of life. I moved into this nice little house.
Right.
That was on a dead-end street, pretty, pretty much, that had no traffic, and now to see, I can't walk my dog in our neighborhood anymore. When you see me walking my dog, where am I walking? Down on the sidewalks in Hallie Hills, because I take my life in my hands, walking up and down my street. I gotta face traffic whichever way I go, because most of the time, the people got their phone in their face, and they're going way too fast. I don't know how many times I've had to jump out of the road, you know, I'm already on the shoulder of the road, we don't have sidewalks on Milli Way. I've had to jump out of the road and onto a neighbor's lawn, because somebody always ran me over, broad daylight or at night, when I'm wearing a reflective vest and a flashlight.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that.
It's frustrating, because somebody's gonna get hurt.
Right.
And I don't want it to be me, I don't want it to be my wife. My wife walks the dog at six AM every morning, and usually before she goes to bed at night, and I walk them during the day, and I don't want, if somebody came after, ran over my wife, believe me, we'd have a real, real issue.
Well, I think, you know, the Chief will. The Chief, I'm sure, will do whatever he has to do. We're gonna meet on the twenty-third of July. I'm not promising you it's gonna happen in two minutes, because not a whole lot happens super fast with government. We have a lot of progress, you know, processes we have to go through, and there's several things we're gonna meet about that day, so we'll start the process, and why did you do the list?
Okay. I sure hope we can get some, at least some enforcement.
Hey, Steve, did the speed sign slow it down?
What's that?
The speed sign when we put it up there.
Yeah, but you did it once, how many years ago was that? You put it on Donnie's lawn, and it was there for two weeks, and, I mean, it did help, but I will say, some people took it as a challenge. See how fast they go past it.
Well, I.
Yeah, they do it in all of them.
You're right, and I can tell you something, because we got the same problem up on Mindy, and we have another way to check the problem, because we do know that.
I, I'm almost, I mean, as much as I hate speed cameras, and I'm the biggest proponent against them, I'd love to see them in our neighborhood, it seems like, because I don't know what else is gonna help. I mean, it's, it's, it's ridiculous. If there's no enforcement, nobody, I, like I said, people are supposed to be adults, and we're all supposed to check ourselves. I drive twenty miles an hour through all the neighborhoods, and I think, were you sitting in the car last night when I came by on my motorcycle? Okay, anyway, I was doing twenty on my motorcycle when I came past the, the, the pump station last night, when I was surprised.
That's what I do. You know, I, I, I'm following the speed limit when I go through the neighborhoods.
What's that?
I'm not zipping up your road.
No, no, and that's why I was wearing any pants, I always see you, you're going put along just like me, and that's fine, I, I check myself, but unfortunately, and, and I hate to say, it's probably half the people that come up and, or, or call and complain, because I know every single person's car that lives in that neighborhood goes, I've walked my dog three times a day there, and I see the same cars every day, and I know what you, where every person lives that speeds up and down my street, and I'm sure there's the people that, that complain to you. Now, I'd say ninety percent of the people live in the neighborhood, that speed in the neighborhood. The other ten percent is Pennsylvania plates, and they're using the neighborhood mainly the Pennsylvania plates or during rush hour, morning and evening, but the rest of the day and night, it's the people living in the neighborhood.
But I don't want you, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, but I'm, I'm not with you when you say that they're not enforcing, because they do enforce.
I'm out there all the time, and I, I don't see the cars very often. I, I really don't.
Listen, if I had that many police, I haven't parked on your street.